It looks like they just put another dump on it. It's like they're treating it like a landscape, like a landfill. Yeah, so I think maybe this time we should just send it back to the menu.
That thing we're adding tonight for you? The thing on the towing?
What is it?
Um. Forty-one, two forty-one. Twenty, twenty-one, two forty-one, two forty-one. How are you, sir? It's nice to see you in person.
Hi, how are you? I know.
Have I already done that?
All right, I got it now. I about took that out.
Ready? The chair will call the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the city council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, even bill.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Philginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Acorm is present.
Thank you. This time I'd like to introduce Roger Holmes for the inspector general report, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pandemic was an interesting time to try to be inspector general, so a lot of, a lot of things by phone and Zoom, but I've filed three reports. I'm really, I know you're very busy this evening, I'm only going to highlight one of them. The other two, if you have questions, feel free to contact me or I'll be happy to come back another time. So twenty twenty-one OIG one, I was contacted by email by an anonymous complainant to ask that I investigate the issue of a physical altercation that occurred March four, twenty twenty-one between Alderman Sean Gregory and another individual. I initiated the investigation by viewing a cell phone video, reviewing an official Springfield Police Department report, and interviewing Alderman Gregory, also contacted the Sangamon County State's Attorney's Office. As explained, I will explain in a moment, I was unable to interview the other individual involved in the altercation because he is currently in the custody of the Illinois Department of Corrections. Alderman Gregory met face to face with me and was very forthcoming, answered every question that I put to him, comfortable and uncomfortable questions. And in his presence, we viewed the complete cell phone video that had been made by a neighbor who was identified in the police report. That video began with Alderman Gregory parked at his residence when a person later identified as Leonardo White approached him. Mr. White began arguing with Alderman Gregory on the south lawn of the Alderman's residence, and there are no sidewalks in that area. Alderman Gregory told me that the argument began when Mr. White accused him of contacting the mother of Mr. White's child. Alderman Gregory states that he'd received ongoing communications prior to the altercation. Mr. White made similar allegations, which the Alderman denied. The video shows the two men arguing, and I found it very significant to note that throughout the verbal portion of the interaction, Alderman Gregory had both hands behind his lower back. He had both hands behind him. While his hands were behind him, he received a poke to the right eye from Mr. White. Police report indicates that the officer examined Alderman Gregory's face, saw a scratch to his right eye, in addition to swelling of his forehead. In response to being poked in the eye, Alderman Gregory landed one blow to Mr. White's head, at which time Mr. White picked him up, threw him to the ground, fell on top of him, and began a series of blows to Alderman Gregory's head. This continued until a neighbor, who was identified in the police report and visible in the cell video, pulled Mr. White off Alderman Gregory. Mr. White then fled the scene. Springfield Police Department was called by a neighbor and responded to the scene. The officer interviewed the person who made the cell phone video, the neighbor who stopped the altercation, and Alderman Gregory, in addition to viewing the cell phone video at the scene. A separate officer was dispatched and apprehended Leonardo White a short time later. Leonardo White was returned to the scene in the custody of the Springfield Police Department, and in Mr. White's version of the police report, he stated that Alderman Gregory was the aggressor and he was defending himself. That's contrary to all of the eyewitnesses and not supported by the cell phone video which I viewed. When Leonardo White was returned to the scene in SPD custody, Alderman Gregory asked if he wished to press charges, and he indicated that he would rather speak with Mr. White in the presence of the officers and see if they could receive, resolve Mr. White's concerns. Alderman Gregory states that they had a conversation regarding the subject of his alleged contact with Mr. White's child's mother, and thereafter indicated that he did not wish to press charges and wished that Mr. White be released from police custody, which occurred at the scene. I have been in contact with the Sangamon County State's Attorney's Office, which indicates that neither Alderman Gregory nor Leonardo White came to their office to seek charges against the other. State's attorney has reviewed the cell phone video and police report, and no charges were filed against either party. As I stated, I was unable to interview Leonardo White because he is currently an inmate at the Illinois Department of Corrections Menard Correctional Center in Chester, Illinois. According to court records, Mr. White was on mandatory supervised release, previously known as parole, for a Sangamon County case in which he was sentenced to three years to Illinois Department of Corrections for what Sangamon County Circuit Clerk website describes as manufacture of a controlled substance being heroin. Mr. White's parole was violated apparently due to a new pending felony charge unrelated to the Alderman Gregory incident. Mr. White has been to the Illinois Department of Corrections four different times from four different counties, including convictions for aggravated battery use of deadly weapon from Peoria County, domestic battery with bodily harm conviction from Tazewell County, and a twenty, two thousand and two felony from Sangamon County in which he was charged with first degree murder and pled to second degree murder and was sentenced to twenty years in the Department of Corrections. Additionally, Mr. White had five orders of protection issued against him in Sangamon County in twenty twenty on behalf of four different complainants. Based on my review of the cell phone video, the Springfield Police Department report, the interview with Alderman Gregory, and my conversations with Sangamon County State's Attorney, I find, as did the police department, that Alderman Gregory was not the aggressor in the March four, twenty twenty-one incident. This, along with the state's attorney's determination not to file charges, leads me to recommend no action or sanctions be taken against Alderman Gregory, and this matter is closed by the inspector general. As I said, there are two other reports from last year. If you have any questions, please contact me, or if you've glanced at them and have any questions now, I'd be happy to take those. Any questions about the Alderman Gregory report? All right. Hearing none? Thank. Yes, sir.
On the other two, could you briefly go over those two? I don't think they've been covered in the city council.
Okay.
Unless I'm mistaken.
I was contacted, this is twenty twenty OIG seven, contacted with a request to review the procedures used in selecting the onsite nearsite health clinic provider for a new five-year contract with the city. Question was raised that the director of City Office of Budget and Management is married to an upper level executive at HSHS Medical Group, a prior vendor and bidder on the new contract. Contacted OBM and was directed to Amanda Long, who's a purchasing agent, who advised me that the OBM director had recused himself from any involvement relating to the onsite nearsite health clinic matter, and that she took charge of all aspects in this matter. The city issued an RFP seeking vendors. Copies of the RFP were sent to several local potential bidders, duly published in the State Journal Register and available on the city's website. At the conclusion of the bidding, HSHS Medical Group submitted a proposal along with Care ATC of Tulsa, Oklahoma, Healthstat of Charlotte, North Carolina, Cerner Corporation of Kansas City, Missouri, Marathon Health of Wenoski, Vermont, One to One Health of Chattanooga, Tennessee, and Activate Healthcare of Indianapolis. Following the bid opening, the Human Resources Department of the city, in conjunction with the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee, as well as the city's healthcare consultants, evaluated the seven proposals. Three finalists were chosen and interviewed. Based upon my review, I found no deviation from standard RFP procedures. City's advertising of the RFP in the press and city website was sufficient to produce a field of seven vendors from across several states. Human Resources, along with General Labor Management Healthcare Committee and the city's healthcare consultants, all participated in the selection of the winning candidate to recommend to the council. I found no appearance of any participation by the director of OBM, and all responsibilities were delegated to his ordinance. Thereafter, the city council, over several meetings, reviewed the ordinance, ultimately approved selection of HSHS for the ensuing five-year period. No improprieties having been uncovered and appropriate procedures having been utilized with regard to the RFP, the complaint is unfounded and no recommendations are made for any follow-up action. And finally, I was contacted by an anonymous, by a complainant who wished to remain anonymous, who complained about the filing of an open employee position with the city. The complainant questioned whether or not the position should have been filled, and whether the person who was selected as the new employee was qualified. I worked through Springfield Human Resources Department. They were able to identify for me the position in question and the procedures followed. The position was covered by a union contract, and following the interviews, an existing employee was promoted into the existing position. The complainant was not an applicant for the position according to Human Resources. I found no improprieties in the filling of the open position or the procedures used to fill that position, and I closed the matter with no recommendations. So that's the three that I have filed, and any questions, be happy to take them.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you very much.
Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Director McCarty to give the year-end fiscal report. And I believe speaking about the American Rescue Plan as well.
Yep.
Talking about both those things. Does everybody have it on their screen? I brought paper copies, if anybody wants any.
Yep.
All the Aldermen have it on your computers, if you'd like to pull it up.
I don't.
It's on the bottom.
The PDF?
Push the P.
Oh, we got it.
I'll just hand some out.
I don't want paper copies.
Give everybody a minute to get a paper copy or pull up there.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Are you looking ahead, Alderman Hanauer? Well, good evening, everybody. I'm here to do the traditional year-end wrap-up report that we like to do in June for the previous fiscal year. We're going to start off with some very good news. We're going to end with a little bit of sobering news, and in between, we'll be talking about ARPA as well, which is the American Rescue Plan Act and the dollars that are involved with that, especially as it pertains to the city of Springfield. So let's start with our traditional KPIs, our key performance indicators. Our ending fund balance this year, you look, you have FY seventeen through FY twenty-one, it was nineteen point one million back about five years ago. This past year, we're looking at ending around thirty-three point five million dollars, so quite a nice increase there. Making equal headway in end of year cash balance, going from three million and seventeen up to eighteen point five this year, and then average daily cash balance from seven million up to sixteen point six million dollars. So we're certainly moving in a positive direction from a key performance, a cash fiscal standing standpoint. Certainly, that's going to be important, as you'll see as we get sort of towards the back of the presentation, why it's very important and why we can, why we'll take every penny that we can get because we're going to need it. So last year, what happened? Well, FY twenty, this is our P and L statement, so you've got your revenues and your expenses as your corporate fund, and I won't go into all these numbers. I'll just point out a couple of things. If you look at the budget for last year, and we had total revenue budgeted of one hundred and twenty-nine million, we ended up with one hundred and thirty million, one hundred and thirty point four million, and that was due to the four point six or seven million dollars that we got through the CARES Act. You know, as the CARES Act was put in place to respond to the pandemic and to help out communities respond, and we were able to figure out a way to fully capture all of those dollars and bring them into the city of Springfield, which helped. Some of those went to a few other places, the utility, I think, a hundred thousand or so for some of the PPE and things that they did, but primarily it went into the corporate fund, and we were just fortunate, we figured out a way to capture that because it was, at the beginning, when guidance first came out, quite frankly, we thought we might be lucky to get a million of it. But as things progressed and we worked through it, we were able to figure it out, and it worked out well in the end, meaning that our revenue that we originally had budgeted, it ended up even better than that in a, in the year of a pandemic, which is really extraordinary and certainly helpful to our fiscal bottom line. On the expense side of thing, on day one of the pandemic, the mayor and I sent out a joint memo to everybody that essentially said, stop spending, spend as little as possible. Obviously, you have to operate. Obviously, we have to do payroll. Watch your hiring, watch your spending, and you can see that the departments certainly adhered to that. You look at the budget, it was one hundred and thirty-two point three million dollars in expenses, but we only spent one hundred and twenty-five million dollars, give or take. So certainly, kudos to the departments and the people who were overseeing that, the managers in those departments, they did a fantastic job of helping us to cope with the pandemic and the fiscal effects of the pandemic. So you've got your fund balance at the bottom again, you'll see that corresponds to the previous page, I don't need to go in on it again, but we did end up, we started with a budgeting about an eighteen point eight percent ending fund balance, we ended up instead with a twenty-six point eight percent because of the CARES Act dollars and because we stopped spending, and we spent about seven million dollars less than what was budgeted. So how did the city respond to the pandemic? Well, I talked about the spending and I talked about the CARES Act, so I don't need to repeat that. But the one thing that I think is really important to point out here on the slide is the fact, it's, it's a thing we didn't do, it's a thing the mayor refused to do, didn't wanted to do, wanted to try everything else before we even got to that, and was there were, there was no furloughs and there were no layoffs. We kept cities employees employed, they got their salaries, they got their benefits. We did everything that we needed to do to implement protective measures, including work from home, staggered shifts, we even sent people home and paid them for not working, essentially. The lost productivity measures about three point seven million dollars worth. The hours involved were around seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty hours of work or lost productivity. That is people being at home, paid, but not able to work this, and not to be confused, there were people who could work from home. I could work from home, my managers could work from home, anybody who had the ability with a laptop and access could work from home. These are folks like the librarians, when we closed the library down, they went home, but they were paid. They weren't laid off, they weren't furloughed. The employees were taken care of, and we were able to do that because we got spending elsewhere and because we got the CARES Act money. So that was one thing that's very important. When you talk about seventy-three thousand hours, just to put that into context, that's roughly ninety-five hundred days equivalent, workdays equivalent, individual workdays equivalent of lost productivity. Yet, we still managed to get through the pandemic and we managed to, to continue providing services. So that says a lot about our employees here in the city of Springfield, so kudos to them as well. The American Rescue Plan, more than one hundred and thirty billion dollars in direct aid available to local governments. Springfield, thirty-three point eight million available to us. And interim final rules were released by the Treasury in early May. Once that happened, we started pouring through them, and remember, these are interims, so things are subject to change, though I don't expect a lot of changes, but I've certainly been surprised before, so we will see on that. Two weeks ago, we completed the registration process with the federal government, and last week, approximately one week later, we received our first of two, what they call tranches, which is installments essentially. We got sixteen point nine million dollars in last week, and we have that sitting in our account now. In fact, when you hear the next Treasury's report, you'll probably see a rather healthy amount of money sitting in the corporate fund as we wait for final guidance on how we can claim these dollars and use these dollars, because that's the one piece we don't have as of yet. We know the types of things, which I'm going to get into, that you can use it for, but then actually how to go out and claim them with the Treasury, we don't have that yet, that hasn't been released yet, so we're waiting on that information. Meanwhile, we're working to put together a plan so that we can capture these dollars, and I'm going to get into that right now. So the rescue plan, what are the eligible uses? There's four broad uses. Responding to the public health emergency and the negative economic impacts, premium pay for employees that are, you know, considered at-risk or high-risk categories, water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, and revenue loss. What can't you use it for? You can't use it to offset tax cuts, so you can't say, great, we got this money, let's institute a tax cut. Can't do that. Can't deposit into pensions, can't deposit it into rainy day funds. Now, don't be confused, a rainy day fund is a separate fund set aside where you stick cash in it. That is not the same as fund balance, so I just want to make that distinction clear. Can't fund debt service with it or legal settlements, and you can't use it for general infrastructure outside broadband, water, or sewer. I'm going to put an asterisk there, and I'll tell you why in a couple of slides. So let's start with the responding to a public emergency or negative economic impacts. I'm not going to get in, I'm not going to read all these things. This is widely available, you have this presentation. If I haven't done it already, I'll send you some of the slide presentations we've got from some of the webinars, from ICMA and GFOA and all that. If I haven't sent those, I'll go ahead and make sure I send those this week, so you have them for reference. Most of that, as you can see, it's sourced from, I think we used the ICMA presentation, it was very close to GFOA on all these. But the one thing I want to point out here is, the way we were able to capture the CARES Act money is through guidance from the Treasury that public safety that was substantially involved in COVID mitigation efforts, you could claim the entirety of their payrolls. That is not the case this time. They changed it. It's now anyone who's primarily involved, in other words, you can't just provide a blanket statement that our police and fire are responding to COVID now. We're kind of coming out of it. Now it's primarily, which means it has to be on an individual basis, and they have to spend more than fifty percent of their time responding to the COVID pandemic. We really don't have that going on right now. It's nothing substantial, even if we were, if we did. So we do not have that as an outlet this time to collect those dollars, it's not going to be able to happen. The negative economic impacts up there, you can see some of those things that they talk about, there's a lot of individual programs out there now that do a lot of these things. The state has done some of these things, the federal government has done some individual projects. So even in the webinars, they were talking about how there's a lot of this out there already, so that's really where you want to push that focus, is on those individual programs so that you can utilize the dollars for your community and providing services to your, your citizens. Premium pay for essential workers. Now, we didn't spend a lot of time working on this for a variety of reasons, really three main reasons. Number one, we talked about it a few slides ago, there were no layoffs, there were no furloughs. We still paid people, we still made sure they got their benefits, even if they were at home, not providing any services to the people of Springfield, the employees were taken care of. Number two, we, we had a, can't read my own writing here. Well, it's irrelevant. At the end of the day, we talked to the mayor about this a little bit before, and I think that his viewpoint is, and I'm sure a lot of you have a viewpoint, and I've talked to a couple of you about this, is that these dollars, we should be utilizing them probably for the entirety of the citizenry, to benefit the entire community. And, oh, and then number three, they made it clear in these webinars that these, the premium pay, these dollars would be really targeted for people in especially high-risk categories that are touching things that other people touched, that are in close proximity all the time, and one of the things we did as a city is, you know, we put in measures to make sure people weren't by each other. We built walls, we did staggered shifts, we did work from home, we did all those things. And then lastly, the dollars are intended for really lower income workers, and there's even a stipulation in there that says that if it's over a hundred and fifty percent of the county and/or state average salary, which is around thirty-five thousand dollars, then you had to get like a special exemption or something like that. So honestly, we haven't spent a lot of time on premium pay, we can dig into it more if we're, if we're told to do so, but it's not where our focus has been the last two weeks. Our focus has been on one other area, which I'm about to get to in a minute. Water and sewer infrastructure, this is pretty self-explanatory, lead lines, water lines, sanitary sewer, that type of thing. There is a dispute, there was between a couple of presentations, a dispute on whether or not you could do direct projects for drainage, for surface water mitigation. One said yes, I think the ICMA one said yes, and another one, and I can't remember if it was the Treasury one or GFOA, one of them said it's sort of a gray area and they're not really sure yet. So that's one area we're not entirely sure on, but ICMA seems to think that you can do it for that. And then, the last thing in infrastructure is broadband. Thing about broadband is it tends to be focused more on providing hookups for places that don't have wire hookups already. I think the majority of our community has wired hookups already that provide the minimum bandwidth that they're talking about. So we haven't really spent a lot of time on this as well, certainly, I'm sure the utility is probably looking at this a little bit too, and they might have some more insight on that, but we just haven't spent very much time on it. What have we spent our time on? This, revenue loss. That's what we've spent all of our time on. And the reason is, well, there's really a couple of reasons. Number one, everyone, including the Department of the Treasury, recommended to start here. Why? Because this offers maximum flexibility on usage of the funds. You can use this for a lot of things, including, this is why I said an asterisk a couple of slides ago, infrastructure. You can use this for streets and sidewalks, you can definitely use this for drainage. There is no gray area. This offers maximum flexibility to use it, and it's a very general statement about in providing for government services to your residents. And on the next slide, I just put a whole litany of different things, just to show you the gamut of the types of things, but it's not an exhaustive list, and you'll see that. So how do you do the revenue loss? How do you capture it? How much are you going to get? Well, the answer is, through revenue loss, we can get it all, and we can get it all by twenty twenty-three. And I think that's probably the part you care most about. So I can go into the details, I don't need to, but I'll just tell you, you look at your previous three years prior to the pandemic, you grow your revenues at either whatever the average rate was for that three years, or, to make it easy, they just said four point one percent. Well, we used four point one percent. We did the math, and in the end, we will be able to capture it. It's on a calendar year basis, which is, you know, slightly adjusted off of our fiscal year, which is a couple of months off, but nevertheless, it gets us to the same result, and that is the ability to claim all of the dollars. Here's that slide I told you about. Here's that slide I told you about, just a whole host of things that you could use the money for. This is not by any means an exhaustive list. There's a whole, really, the only thing you're limited by, quite frankly, is the things that were on that ineligible use slide a few slides back. So just consult that, the debt service, the pensions, the rainy day fund, that type of a thing. Can't really use it for that, but anything else is pretty much fair game, even if it is explicitly, except for the infrastructure, you can use it for infrastructure. That, you just can't do a separate, like, under one of those other categories, you just can't do streets and sidewalks. That's all that is. Here is the revenue analysis. If you want to see it, I'm certainly not going to go into this, but it's there for your review. You can see how we came up with it. We did, and the only one to point out here is, we did identify, what, four funds that were impacted under the categories of general governmental taxes and fees. Of course, the corporate fund. Fund 95, because Fund 95 is funded through primarily sales tax and hotel motel tax. So that is certainly eligible. Motor vehicle parking, parking fees are eligible. So as you all know, there hasn't been any, there's been very little parking, there's not been any charge for parking for quite some time. In our MVP fund, we've been subsidizing out of the corporate fund. Last year, it was $300,000 maybe, give or take, might have been more. This year, I think we budgeted $400,000 or $500,000 in subsidies, not knowing how long the pandemic was going to go, not knowing how long it was going to be before people started paying for parking. So MVP is part of that. And of course, much to Director Doll's delight, we've got SCBB in here, Fund 21. He's very happy about that. Yeah. Every time I see him, he smiles at me. He's always trying to give me stuff and, anyway. So certainly, that's hotel motel tax that counts, so we're looking at doing that, which will help him and his team as they try to work to bring our tourism back to the city of Springfield. I know that'll provide a big boost, so we're happy to help out with that effort and get him the dollars that he needs to make that a reality. And again, you look at this, you have $16 million this year. Of the $16 million, through revenue loss, we think we can claim $12 million this year, $15.6 million next year, and then whatever's left the following year after that. So by 2023. The thing I want to point out is, when it comes to revenue loss, you have up until 2024, I believe, is to claim the dollars. It has to be sort of obligated. You have 2026 to spend it. So there's no rush on spending $33 million. It gives you all time to work with the mayor and decide, you know, a good thoughtful plan on how to utilize these dollars in the best possible way for the citizens of Springfield. So again, no need to rush, no need to feel like you have to come up with something. Again, we won't even get 16 more million until next year. So all great news, no doubt about it. The year ended up much better than we could ever have hoped in a pandemic. We came out ahead of what we budgeted, even pre-pandemic. Fund balance is a record level. Certainly, cash is really high, could potentially be at a record level. Things are certainly good when you look at this particular window in time that we have, this snapshot in time. We're getting the ARPA dollars, that's going to help as well. Things are looking really good. But when we look out and expand our window from the one year that we're currently in, or the two years that we're currently in, and how good things are, when we expand our window to 10 or 20 years, we keep coming back to the same thing, over and over and over. And it's not changing, and it's not getting better. And that is pensions. There is a reason why, if you look at our headcount chart, those headcount charts that are in your books, and if you had some from even previous years, you would see in 2006, I want to say, we had 281 officers. We budgeted 225 this year. We used to have 225-ish in Public Works a decade or so ago. Now we have like, what, 185? Why? You're looking at it. This is the primary reason. This, along with some of the impact of e-commerce, which hopefully is going to rebound a little bit with the new law that's in place, I won't get into that, but we should be getting more sales tax in. Never be what it was, even with the new law. But that, and then this. This is the primary culprit, and this is not going away. The one thing I wanted to do is, I put this slide in each and every year in the overview and have for the last couple of years, but the one thing I've never done a good job, and I realize this, I've never really done a good job of spelling out what you're looking at here. So the next slide does that very thing. What does that chart on the previous page tell you? It tells you that between now and 2040, we have, according to the actuaries, this is not me making up a number, we have $830 million that we have to pay for police and fire pensions between now and 2040. Of that, we think property taxes will cover about $500 million, but we still have to pay it. So the rest, $330 million, which is, you see on the previous slide, we've talked about that, it's the gap, 303 million from other sources, that's our sales taxes, those are the things that are paying for those fire department. Those are the things paying for police right now. Those are the things paying for Public Works right now. That's where that money's got to come from, or it's got to be new revenue. It's basic math. What does that average out to? That means between now and 2040, we have an average of $41.5 million a year for police and fire pensions. Raise your hand if you remember what we budgeted this year for police and fire pensions. $27 million. Remember how hard the budget was and has been the last couple of years? We had $27 million. We have to average, if the state does nothing, we have to average $41.5 million over the next 18 to 19 years. That's why right now, it looks really, really good. But when I'm looking at 10 and 20 years, things don't look so good. So as we continue to think about where we are and how good things are right now, and figure out how to spend our money, I'd be remiss if I just didn't remind everyone what we're facing and the enormity of it. I wish it wasn't here. Certainly, we're trying to figure out some things we can do, could use some state help, but I don't think the bill went anywhere this year. IML's been trying to get through to provide relief to communities like Springfield. So I'm sorry to end on a sobering note, but it's important. So with that, are there any questions?
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this microphone working this week?
I hope so. I can hear you.
All right. So you can hear me, I guess, that's fine.
Can you hear him in the audience?
Director, thanks for the presentation this evening. I just, I hate to get into specifics of projects, but I was certainly happy to hear that the funds could be, can be utilized for storm sewer projects. We all know that we have a major, extremely major problem on West Washington and Cokey Mill. Anytime there is a significant, even a minor rain event, that intersection floods, the city workers actually have to go out and put up, Public Works has to put up barricades. And, you know, with rainstorms, you can't always do that quickly. It's a tremendous liability, needless to say. The mayor has assisted with, along with Public Works, on getting the engineering well underway. And I know it's a topic near and dear, but that's, I'm glad to hear that a project like that would be eligible, because that's something that needs to be addressed.
Right.
Director, one of the things, and this is unlike me to do this, I've kind of been jotting notes here on my, this page, the slide presentation, but about a year and a half ago, when I say it's not like me to do this, I usually like to do my homework, put things on paper, talk to a lot of people about it, and then bring it forward. But I'm just going to go ahead and throw this out there, spitball this evening. But about a year and a half ago, I watched this program on a Sunday morning, I think it was CBS Sunday Morning, and they had this, they had this presentation, the segment on, I believe it was Tulsa, Oklahoma, in creative ways, they were trying to attract people to their community. And I think Tulsa had a program where, if you do certain things, and I'm oversimplifying this, but you get $15,000 if you come to their community and live. And so I went so far, and I started researching what other communities throughout the United States are doing, and there's all kinds of different programs. Some are attracting telecommuners, some are attracting recent college grads, and we all know, we've said, I believe the mayor's opponent, the first time he ran, talked about something that we've all been complaining about, our kids don't necessarily want to come back to Springfield, or don't, and trying to find ways to get our kids to come back to Springfield. And anyway, I did research, took a look at it, even met with Senator Menard, we kicked around some ideas, and fast forward, COVID hits. So everything gets put on the side burner. And so what I'd like to do is, and I've kind of been thinking about it for the last several months, about, you know, I'm a numbers person, and I tend to try to find, get in the weeds way too early. Instead of coming up with a concept, I always want to figure out how we're going to fund it first, which is probably important in the scheme of things. But when I saw the slide that you put forward today that says, "Programs for community involvement and enrichment," I'd like to work with you and the mayor and whoever else wants to, on putting something together to, we all know that Springfield, the mayor, you've said it many times, we are, we were voted the most attractive city after COVID. And we hope we're after COVID, and putting together a program where we're, whether it's attracting telecommuners, because we've all learned that, and I've got family members that do it, you can, if you're telecommute, you can work anywhere. You don't, but we got to find ways to bring people and get people to want to live here. I think it's a wonderful place to live and raise a family. I think we've got a lot going for us. But I'd like to see, look at the possibility, using that hook that we just mentioned, of coming up with a program, whether it's attracting telecommuners or recent college grads, to try something new here in Springfield, to think outside the box, and at least have a test program or a way to at least test it and see if it works, or come up with something that's creative and that encourages the community involvement, but also gets people to come here and live that don't necess, that aren't here now, whether they're the youth or any age, that's something we've got to kind of figure out. But it's a way to invest our community, I think, with long-term results. And it seems like these funds, the recovery funds, would fit very well with a program like this and developing that long-term goal so that we could attract people and get our population up, keep sales tax growth, and the other fees growing here, and quite frankly, just keep our community vibrant. So I know that was a lot to throw out there, but I'd like to sit down and talk with you and whoever about it, because it's something that's near and dear to my heart, something we've got to do.
Absolutely.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Repath.
Thanks, Mayor. One of the questions I would have more for the mayor is, can we get a list of major projects that are outstanding that, one that comes to mind is the sewer problem that we have downtown, we've got it in a lot of places in this town, and it's going to eventually, that, along with the ash ponds and that with CWP, are eventually going to jump up and bite us. I don't disagree with Alderman Donlin that being able to attract people, that would be good, but I would like to see us try to get some of these projects that have been, that are going to, that are, you know, are going to, you know, turn around and end up, if we have a major cave-in somewhere in this town, we could lose buildings, we could lose, it could be a big problem. You know, and I know, you know, what I don't want to see is, let's take this $33 million and just, you know, burn it up. We've got to look at something, you know, we've got to look at some of these long-term problems that we've had, that we just have not been able to focus on. Now, I don't know what the rule is as far as any type of a bonding. Can we bond some of this, or is that not allowed, or?
You can't use to pay debt service.
Okay. But I would like to see a list of, I know we have, Nate, we got, what's the, how much is the estimated for the sewer project? And how much are we getting from feds anyway on that? Can we use this along with federal funds? Can we use it as a city support? I'm just throwing this out there. I mean, we've got, you know, and we've got things like, you know, the lead lines, we got getting rid of the, getting people out at the lake on the sewer system, things like that, that, these are things that we've been trying for years to do, and I think that that's something we need to look at. You know, Alderman Donlin, that affects wards nine, eight, and 10, the Washington, you know, the Washington and Cokey Mill, that's bad. We've all had constituents who's lost cars due to that bad flood plain there. So I'd just like to see us get some sort of a list from you guys so that we can maybe try to, at least even if we could just knock off one thing off of that list, that's one thing we don't have to worry about anymore.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head, because I've had this conversation with Nate Bottom and others, if you want to look ahead, you don't want to do the easy-to-fund projects, you want to do the hard ones, and I think, who has flooding issues in their ward? About everybody does.
We all, I mean, everybody.
And I think Alderman, Pulgenzi brought it up about the north end, you know, we're going to be slapped with an EPA finding on that if we don't do something. So we had had conversations with the Santeri District on how we can leverage these dollars for that with regards to bonding, and Director McCarty can correct me if I'm wrong, the flexibility in this is, you can do the revenue replacement or what have you, and then your ability or the strength of the corporate fund, at that point, you could do bonds and move in that direction to the other initiatives. But we'll have those more detailed discussions, and that's the importance of having the ward plan meetings right now, is because we can get the public's feedback on some of those items as well. Alderman Repath, then Alderwoman DeCenzo. Alderman Gregory, then Alderwoman Conley.
Just to follow up, Alderman Donlin hit it on the head, the flooding problem around Springfield's a major problem. I know in John's Ward, the Indian Hills was underwater, because my sister called me every time it went underwater, so I have to hear that too. But there's also an area out in the Crowes Mill area, I mean, the Crowes Mill area that was underwater this year and last year, so that is a big problem. But again, Ralph hit it on the head, we started a sewer project to get rid of the sanitary septic tanks on Lake Springfield, because a lot of the older ones are leaking into the lake. So that's a problem. And so that was a program that we started, but we ran out of money, and the Santeri District ran out of money, and that's got to be part of our proposal, because if we poison our water supply, we're going to have a real problem. And that goes back to the ash ponds, too. I know they don't leak this way, and the director's over there going to throw something at me, but they don't leak this way, they, if they don't leak at all, we got them sealed up. But there's going to be a problem that's going to jump up and bite us one of these days. So I agree with you all.
Alderman DeCenzo.
I agree with what everyone has said here, and if we could, you know, put some money towards speeding, that'd be awesome, too, but I don't think that qualifies. But what does qualify is something that we have talked about now around this horseshoe for years, and I would think that respond to public health emergency negative economic impacts would apply to homelessness. The unhoused, as we know, are a huge problem that are, it's negatively affecting our economic impact in certain areas of the city, and I think this is an opportunity for us to solve that problem once and for all.
No doubt about it. Alderman Gregory, then Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Director, I just had a few questions. One, the CARES Act, did we have anything left over from that? I remember us having, what, 725, nothing, we spent it all?
4.8 was the total allocation for the city, and we were able to capture all of it.
And then, earlier in your slide, you said, part of this will be awaiting guidance on filing claims. Can you help me understand that a little bit? Is that the guidance on how we're going to file?
Sure. So we've received interim guidance on what the money can be spent on. And it's got sort of that four pillars, including revenue replacement, and that's the one we focused on, because getting it through that offers maximum flexibility to you all to figure out how to spend it, how you want to spend it. But the issue, well, I'm sorry to answer your question, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I was, to answer your question, what the further guidance we need is the instructions on how to actually put in a claim. So we're ready to claim revenue. We're ready to claim $12 million in revenue now. We've done the work. We just don't have the instructions yet on exactly what we need to do to do that. We've got the money sitting there, 16 million sitting there, but we don't have an official claim against it as of yet. We're waiting for instructions on how to do that.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, I just wanted to make sure. And then, earlier in the slide, it had mentioned something about expanded uses for hardest-hit communities or something in that nature. I have to go back. Can you expound on that a little bit?
Sure. So that would be slide number four, no, I'm sorry, slide eight. If you have, I don't know if you've got a paper copy, but I think it's on page eight. But that is part of the first pillar, which is responding to the COVID-19 emergency and addressing negative economic impacts. And that was one of those areas where there are a lot of things that are already individual programs, very put in place by some states, including Illinois, for like rent assistance and that type of thing. That's what they're talking about there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say there's a huge benefit to letting other people speak first. You've all covered a lot of my topics. I just wanna again put in a pitch for Ward Eight Storm Sewers. I have, I can draw you some lines of where people are complaining and where the connections are not strong, so looking forward to seeing how we map these plans, these projects out. But then one thing, and I do, Alderwoman DeSensio kinda touched on this, but I was just looking quickly at this list, policing initiatives is included under technology upgrades. Is that, could we, for example, buy more of the hello, you're speeding signs?
Sure. Pretty much any of that. You wanna buy those cameras that they showed last week or week before, you can do that.
I just, so I'm getting a lot of questions from people about, you know, the one side on Chatham Road that Leland Grove has that tells you how fast you're going. And I just, you know, and we're looking at policing initiatives and again, speeding, I've been on the, I was on the phone twice today over speeding concerns and residential roads with children, with, you know, people walking, and someone's flying by, and I know they don't have a radar gun on them. Tell chief, I already know that. But you can tell when someone's going too fast on a residential road, so I'd like to make sure that we do keep that in the mix. But also, I have to say, the second item on this list that pops out at me is restoring budget cuts, including police and fire department. So, are we looking at, this is a way to restore our lines, our cuts to the fire department?
If you so choose, yes, it is. It's one of those situations where we know that there's an issue, but there are talks underway. This would provide temporary relief, right? I showed you the last few slides, it's still up there, what our problem is. And this is the type of thing that, you know, I think Alderman Redpath and others were concerned about it, is the future. But the nice thing about this money, which I think is what you're getting at, is this provides the ability, if the council chooses, to reinstitute those funds, for this year at least, as we work through how to move forward into the future. So, it provides, it buys a little bit of time. Is it a panacea? Does it solve our problem? No?
No, and it doesn't.
But it helps.
Right, and one thing you did mention, though, was new revenues for that pension debt. So, do we, do you have numbers handy on what our 1.5% of the marijuana tax has brought in so far?
I can tell you that each month brings in 42,000 to 45,000, at least the last time I looked. So, you're talking about 23, let's call it 22 and a half, 22,000 a month for the 1.5% going into pensions. So, we're talking 300,000.
But it's some new revenue.
Yeah, it's 300,000, yeah.
And do we have projected growth numbers on that?
On cannabis?
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's brand new, we don't have any idea.
But the first year has, or the first, not even complete year has been?
600,000 or so, I think, is what our initial estimate was, just based on the numbers as they were coming in. The issue that you have, we've gone, we've gone full circle. We're now back to the point where we can't report the revenues again because we have another business that opened in Ward 10 that's not the same as the one we already have permission from. So, there either has to be a law change with the state, so maybe somebody could talk to Senator Turner, or we have to reach out to, is it Maribas, I think, is that right? And see if they'll provide the same permission that Ascend, or Ascent, whatever it is. Ascend. Somebody knows it, that's good. Ascend, I knew it was close because I drive by it, it's the old steakhouse. But if we get permission from Maribas like we did from Ascend, then we're okay. But now that we've got that second business that we don't have an explicit law change for and we don't have permission for, we're back to, we can't tell you how much we're getting.
But that's another, a brand-new one that's opened in the city limits.
Yeah, it's open now.
And I'm just saying, so we are trying to grab new revenue to address this issue.
Absolutely, sure. Unfortunately, every dollar helps, no question about it, but unfortunately, $300,000 a year.
Well, it's not, oh, that's, yeah.
It's, it's, it's not gonna help, it's gonna help, but it's not gonna help a lot, unfortunately.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry, I'm going through the whole list, Mayor.
That's good.
You can't put a pile of money in front of us. So, the technology upgrades for the traffic light systems, are we working on, do we have fin, and this is probably better for Nate Bottom, who I see is hiding again.
He's factored hiding behind the pillar. Can't hide, Nate.
That's a good effort, though. But those, so like the modernization that we've talked about, that's absolutely part of this.
You wanna modernize traffic signals, you wanna turn streets to, from two-way to one-way or one-way to two-way, or use it for any of that.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I appreciate this because the last time we talked, you weren't entirely certain that storm sewers were in there, so.
Well, under revenue replacement, I'm fairly confident that we can do that. And I thought they were in the other, like I said, the ICMA presentation said clearly in there that they're covered, and then another one said, well, and I think that was the one from the Treasury, which gives me pause. They're sort of, you know, the ones setting the rules, so they weren't quite sure if that was gonna be included. But under revenue replacement, so the key for us, our homework has been figure out how to capture as much as possible through revenue replacement. We figured that that's what the council and the mayor would want, that's what we've been working on, and like I said, we've, we are very confident that we can capture all of it through revenue replacement, just as long as everybody's patient and can wait till 2023 to get the last of it. Again, remember, we have till 2026 to spend it, so 2024 to obligate it.
So, because I understand that certain supplies are difficult to get right now, concrete, you know, some of the things that we would need for the infrastructure, if we have, if we have projects obligated, but the dollars haven't been spent down by '26, do we lose the money or do we, like?
There has to be spent by 2026.
Don't worry, I'll spend it.
We have to obligate by 2024. Based on the conversations going on, I don't know that we'll have to wait that long.
I don't think we'll have a huge problem, but I just wanna, I like this.
I have a feeling these dollars can be spent sooner rather than later, but no shortage of things that need to be done, there's no doubt about that.
Just send us all a check for 3.3 million, we'll just call it.
Just everything else, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, Alderman Phil Genzy.
Thank you. I know we all have a lot of flooding issues, but as documented by the city, we have a lot of them in Northgate, Irisdale, Indian Hills, and a lot of it requires not necessarily storm sewers, but grading the areas so that they drain better. And I wonder if we've got enough personnel to do that, or if we need to hire people to do that and start working on two or three of these projects simultaneously.
I'll defer to the Director of Public Works for that, I can't answer what his plan is, but I'm gonna let him answer.
We certainly don't have the personnel that can do it at this time. We would either need to contract out or hire additional personnel in regards to grading and ditching. We do a lot of that in-house at this time, so the larger storm sewer projects, we tend to contract those out. In regards to some of the costs, I think the northeast area sewer, $43 million was the last estimate a couple of years ago. $20 million, I believe, was the estimate to remove all of the sewers off the lake. I think we had $10 million kind of earmarked for doing some downtown detention pockets to help alleviate some of the flooding there. Five to seven million for Coke Mill Road project, including the drainage.
Seven?
What's that?
Did you say seven?
Five to seven million.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't have all the numbers in front of you, I'm shooting from the hip a little bit.
I feel like you just spent all our money.
You did.
Bill, go back, we need a lot more.
If only I could.
So, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very good, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
And if you got any questions, you know how to find me.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 18th, 2021 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to place incorporate a pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
Go move.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, favor, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open.
Two of us can vote.
I'm still looking at Bill Looby.
If you do, roll call vote.
Yeah, I'll do a roll call. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Phil Genzy.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donilon.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Then ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda number 2020-464 and 2021-193 remain table during committee. Is there a motion, I think, which one was the resolution for the corporation council on the gambling? Yep, the gaming.
Motion to withdraw 2021-193 regarding a resolution regarding casino.
Second.
Been moved in second to withdraw 2021-193. In second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-164, an ordinance authorizing preliminary relocation expenses for the relocation of personal property located on parcels SR 0126, KH4 LLC, and SRO 129 Family Video Movie Club, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $647,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment III for the Office of Public Court. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-164 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, this, we've got a family video site that borders Ward Six and Ward Seven, and it's really turned into something in the nature of a landscape dump, a landfill dump.
What's the address on that?
It's directly north of Laurel on MacArthur, and so we'd like to return this to committee for a fuller discussion next week, if we can, okay?
Can we send public works out from the site?
There's weeds growing out of it.
We have sent inspectors to site, we have. So, it's a motion to send this back to committee.
Just to let you know, too, they have removed a lot of their stuff and are out of this building in regards to the property along for the rail project, and they have about 80 to 90% of the work complete, and this, they are eligible to be paid for these relocation expenses, so.
We understand that as far as the railroad relocation, we're just trying to get their attention because we haven't received their attention properly yet on this other site on MacArthur Boulevard.
It's ridiculous, I mean, go by there, we, my son and I walk there all the time to get ice cream, and there's just these huge piles of sand, and now there's weeds growing out of them. It's an eyesore, there's no reason for it.
Yeah, these are dump truck loads of sand, more than 10, and it looks like there's a fresh one today, so.
Brand-new one.
Yeah. So, we just don't wanna give them a half million dollars for railroad relocation when they're being uncooperative on this other site that's related to family video. They've got different family members and such, and we just wanna get their attention.
Are they the owners, Alderman?
There's one family video member or entity that owns the land that we're talking about at the MacArthur, and then there's another family.
As far as this piece of property on 10th, for the 10th Street quarter, are they owners or they just in the building?
On 10th Street?
Mm-hmm.
We think there are common family interests to both sites.
Have we, have we talked to them? Has anybody talked to them?
Yeah, I've talked with the downstate property manager for family video, and he made some progress, but it's just stalled. And so, we expect to get some resolution, we hope.
I respect it.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yep, it's been a motion to return to committee, and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-210, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for Fire Protection Services from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-210 on final passage.
Go move.
Been moved in second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
I think last week, I asked if someone could tell me whether, have we had a chance, the opportunity, I know it was a short week for everyone, whether these are required to be both fire and emergency, or are we required by statute just to do fire?
This actually is not, I did go back and check.
Right.
This is not actually a fire protection district, but this is an area within the city.
Okay, that's right, I apologize, yeah.
No, no, but we are looking at the statute for the fire protection district to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
This is located entirely within Springfield.
It's a different deal, yeah, I remember that now, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no.
I like your fingerprint, man.
Next item on the agenda is 2021-211. I'd like to return this back to committee.
Go move. Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor, Alderwoman Conley.
Why are we turning this back to committee?
There is a, we just need to take a look at her term, and on the other board was less than a year, and we should have someone that's been there longer because the regional planning, it's better if we have someone with more experience.
Has she been contacted about this?
Yeah, I talked to her about that, so we just need some time to work through it, see what we can do. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-215, an ordinance approving the appointment of William Looby to the Civil Service Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-215 on final passage.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favors, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda item passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-216, an ordinance approving the appointment of Sue Dai to the Civil Service Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-216 on final passage.
Go move.
Been moved in second, any discussion?
Hi, I'm Sue Dai.
Sue couldn't make it last week, so she's here this week. If you'd like to state a little bit about yourself and experience.
Well, I was born and raised in Springfield. Most of my career has been in banking, but it's been in personnel. I currently work for the Secretary of State in the Personnel Department, managing the Workers' Comp Division and the leave, medical leave and FMLA area, so I've had quite a bit of experience in personnel.
Any discussion? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda item passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-226, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Springfield Carriage Company located at 724 East Edward Street for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-226 on emergency passage.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda item passes 10 voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2021-227, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance and placement of the Honor Guard Memorial Project, Eagle Scout Project organized by Bryson Taylor to be located in green space between municipal centers east and west for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-227 on emergency passage. Been moved in second, any discussion? I don't know if you wanna come up and say a few words or you'd rather not. I don't know if you want to come up and say a few words, or you'd rather not. Well, you can, I think it's a great project. We appreciate the Staub family and their support for the project as well.
I'd just like to say, Mayor, Bryson lives in my neighborhood. He's a bright young man, and he's worked pretty hard on this project, and I know his dad's proud, and the family's proud, and the Staub's are proud of him. So this will be a really good project for Springfield, and they're really working hard.
Yeah, and I'm sorry he's not here tonight, he's working, and unfortunately, he couldn't get the night off. But his vision for his Eagle Scout project was to build this memorial for the fallen police officers. We've worked about a year.
Excuse me, sir.
We've worked about a year and a half on this with different ideas. We've met with the mayor and the chief, and we've come up with some different ideas. The last idea that we're presenting here tonight is not just one for the Springfield officers, it's for any officer that's fallen in Sangamon County. We thought we would unify this community and open it up to all of Sangamon County. So say if New Berlin has a fallen officer, they would also be put onto this memorial. This will probably show a little bit better than maybe what you guys got on your email. Monroe Street's here, Municipal Center West and East is here, there's a little area here with some woodchips. It's going to be a sixteen-foot-tall granite obelisk is what it's going to be. The city side will look like this. The blue line here will be electrified, so it'll be lit at all times. The county side looks like this. And then on the backside, we brought it all together for everybody, so we're not only just the fallen, but we've got dedicated to the fallen, the retirees, and those still serving. And then a little green space that'll be around it. This will be a little about six to eight-inch curbing here, this will all be green grass, and then this will be blue flowers all the time, so we still have the blue in there. So with COVID hitting, unfortunately, quarry shut down, and unfortunately, people are still dying, so they're getting orders for tombstones, headstones, whatnot. They're telling us we're about a year out from getting this, so we need to start our fundraising now, so I can get this thing ordered, so we're not another year, year and a half, two years before we get this done. I'm anticipating summer of 2022 to have this erected and finally done. Project itself comes in, we're estimating about a hundred thousand. If you noticed on there, we did not put the names of the fallen officers on there. We're going to use some technology here, we're going to have a QR reader out there, so you can put your phone down, and it'll have a little detail about each fallen officer. So we were able to shrink this base down a little bit and save us a little bit of money by not having to add all the names as we go.
Alderman Donilon.
Mr. Taylor, I just, I just want to say, you know, please express to your son how much we appreciate this being the project. What we have presently in Municipal Center East is a nice gesture, but it certainly is not deserving of what those fallen officers that we've had over the years, and this will be a welcome addition to our community.
Yeah, and most of the public probably doesn't know that that plaque is above the elevators. If you never go into the police station, you never know that's even there. So putting this out here, you'll have people hopefully visiting Lincoln's home, and then they're going to come over and visit some of this, so I think it's going to be a great thing when it's done.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you. Have you set up a donation site yet?
We have not, we have gone out, we're going out and started businesses first, and then see how we do with businesses. If we need to, yes, we'll probably go to GoFundMe or Venmo, but we are going to go out and solicit businesses first.
I would, if you could, just let us know when you have something set up.
Okay.
I think you might have some people running the horseshoe, and I'd like to contribute to that also. Thank you very much.
Alderman Hanar.
Can, you want to say your contact information? Because we're, apparently, we're live in front of millions or something, they tell me. You can't believe the number of people that actually watch us.
Right.
It's somewhat frightening when I find out, but why don't you give your contact information, so if people want to donate, they can at least contact you and.
Yeah, if anybody wants to contact me, again, it's Todd Taylor. My cell phone is 217-494-4268.
Todd's a retired Springfield Police Sergeant.
Yeah, thank you very much for your service.
Couple of years.
He's also a distant cousin of mine. He said that every time. Not kidding.
Alderman McMiniman.
I'm sorry, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, and sir, it looks like we've got two of your underwriters on the, in the back pew there.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to, I forgot to bring Mr. Staub into this. PJ and the Staub family have been tremendous through this thing. PJ's, we met with him about a year and a half ago, and he, of course, has all the software and all to put this thing together. So he has helped us tremendously put this thing together. I'll be sleeping and sometimes get a text at three o'clock in the morning from him, tell me he changed something a little bit, maybe look at it in the morning. So without PJ and the Staub family, this thing probably would not be where it's at right now, because we were starting with just something very small, and now it's erected to this thing. So he gets all the credit here.
And my brother Mark couldn't be here at night, he's making, I think he's doing laundry. This is for the public, because he'll be watching this. I love it. So anyway, I got my son here with us, too, but we all work hard to try to give back to the community, and it's very important that other businesses or professions in the area give back as much as they possibly can, because without the people around us, we wouldn't be here. So it's not about, and the quote on here is not about one, it's about all. So we're all, I mean, I'm for everybody here, so I love it.
Well, thank you for your great work on this and other projects.
Well, we're always there to help, and like I say, I got to do something at night, you know, and so God bless y'all, thank you.
God bless you. And then Todd, if you could show the audience and the media your design, that'd be good.
Yeah, let me go this way here with it. Going right here is a little woodchip area right here, Municipal Center East and West, and this is Monroe Street, so it's going to be highly visible here. That will be the city side. Obviously, the county side. The backside, so it gets everybody, the fallen, the retirees, and those still serving. And then, of course, it just gives a little overview of this will be some green grassy area, and this will always have some nice blue flowers in it, so trying to catch the blue line.
Great.
Good job, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Proctor.
I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think some of us probably like to co-sponsor this with you.
Absolutely.
If that's okay.
Yeah, definitely.
We'll list everybody else as a co-sponsor.
That'd be great, thanks.
If you feel otherwise, yep. Well, thank you again, we appreciate your great work to recognize those that serve us each and every day. So all those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. It passes eleven voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Chairlentain, a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading, agenda number 2021-240, an ordinance repealing previously passed ordinance number 436-11-20 pertaining to public health requirements.
So move.
Second.
Been moving second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chairlentain, a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading, agenda number 2021-241, ordinance amending Chapter 76, Section 76.44, the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the empowerment of vehicles due to fly dumping.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chairlentain, a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading, agenda number 2021-242, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses by one and increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for RTP Liquor LLC, doing business as Five Star, located at 1249 Toronto Road.
So move.
Second.
Been moving second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chairlentain, a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading, agenda number 2021-243, an ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding Section 36.57, A11, designating Juneteenth as a city holiday.
So move.
Second.
Been moving second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the City Council? Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, I'd like to recognize one of our former colleagues, who now is a state senator, Doris Turner. She was just inducted into the Land Fair Hall of Fame to join Mayor Ozzy Langfelder and myself, so want to congratulate her. That's a great honor for her, and she's a wonderful public servant.
Absolutely. That's great. Congratulations. We'll have her back now that she's in the Hall of Fame, right?
Hey, she's in the Hall of Fame in Landfair, man, she knows what she's doing.
That's right. Yeah, there unfinished business? We do have a ward plan meeting starting actually tomorrow night, 5:30 at KC, with wards nine and 10. Alderman Donilon and Hanar kicking us off, so that'll be good. And then on Saturday in Ward Eight at LRS at 10 o'clock. And then Monday is Ward Six at Blessed Sacrament Cafeteria in the school at 5:30. So we invite everybody to come out, and it depends on the place, the CDC mask guidelines will be followed for sure, but it's, again, it's up to that particular entity, what guidance they will have in place with their own establishments will be followed.
Is he locked back in Blessed Sacrament yet? Or they, has that statute of limitations gone up from when you went to school there?
Is he in the Hall of Fame yet? Are you in the Hall of Fame at Blessed Sacrament?
I'm not sure if I'm tall enough.
He's got to be 6'1".
That's right. So I'll have to check. Is there any new business, or I should say, Ward Five, we had to reschedule because the Levitt Concert Series is this Thursday, beginning at six o'clock on the Y Block. So hopefully you'll come out and enjoy the music. Is there any new business coming before the City Council?
Yes, Mayor, I saw.
Alderman Williams.
Thank you. So garbage, this is probably an old subject, but new business for me. I would like to try to do something about garbage and garbage collection. I think it's out of control. I mentioned to the department about the property tax bill or C WLP, none of this was new to them, but I truly believe that we need to work on something and come up with a way that the garbage is on the landlords or landowners, and that we get this back under control, because I'm telling you, it's a citywide problem, so.
Yep, Alderman Fulgenzie, and then Alderwoman DeSenzio.
I'd like to put in a request now, and I'd like to get the city out of the garbage business and let it flow to the people that are just in better shape than we are. I just don't think we ought to be governing every aspect of someone's life, and I don't think that we ought to be in the garbage business. Just a thought.
Alderwoman DeSenzio.
Alderman Williams, I completely agree with you. I don't want to be in the garbage business, but we are in the garbage business, and it affects the quality of life and the health, you know, of our constituents as, I brought this up last week, people couldn't get to their houses because it was blocked with garbage. So, you know, we have ordinances on the books to enforce this, it's not being enforced. The waste haulers are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and we're not holding their feet to the fire. So, you know, this is, I don't know what, where we go from here, but we do have a mechanism in place to handle this, but it isn't being handled.
Yeah, we appreciate those comments. Actually, Jill Steiner, after the next tent discussion Friday, she gave me some information that Icon had looked into and made some recommendations, so Public Works is following up with that. And again, there's processes in place, we need to revisit with the waste haulers and perfect that process, and one of them will be including, if someone doesn't have service, we have to figure out a way to provide that service, even though we're not in the waste hauling business. When you look to attracting people to a community, of unification is definitely one of those, and we do have a useful tool that has not been utilized, and that's putting it on the power bill, so we'll look at all avenues to remedy the situation once and for all.
I appreciate you for, you know, just giving it attention, because I've been working with the department, and I will say that they have been out there with me, and done what they can do now, and the waste haulers is a whole different issue. And it really would matter to me if it's the city or individuals, but we have to have a way to make somebody held accountable and know that this is being picked up, you know, whether they put it down or not. I mean, it's just raw garbage around the city, so thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion on that topic? Is there any other new business coming before the City Council? Just a reminder, this, I think it's this upcoming Saturday, there's going to be a D-Day recognition ceremony at the American Legion from, I believe, nine o'clock, starting at nine in the morning to two in the afternoon on Sangamon Avenue. And Jasimar Madonia, who had his 100th birthday, will be a World War II veteran, along with other veterans of World War II being recognized, so if you can come out during that timeframe, it'd be appreciated. So we do have several people signed up to speak. Sharina and Shamika regarding Juneteenth, and actually Virginia Persley on the same topic. So if you state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, I am Erica Austin, this is Shamika Kerr-Gregory. Sharina Douglas is not here, but we're a part of the Juneteenth Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and thank you for your continued support of Juneteenth throughout the year. Legislation making June 19th day off for all state employees and a school holiday was unanimously approved by the Illinois House last week and by the State Senate last month. Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, and Liberation Day, is a monumental moment for African Americans in the United States. On June 19th, 1865, Union Army General Gordon Granger, reading of the Federal Orders in the city of Galveston, Texas, proclaimed all slaves in Texas now were free. The news of the emancipation, freeing the slaves by President Lincoln, took two years to reach Texans, and by that time, President Lincoln was dead, and the Thirteenth Amendment, which abolished slavery, had passed Congress. Even though the slaves were free, many plantation owners wanted them to stay until the harvest, so they encouraged them to stay as hired employees. This shows the injustice between the people in power and those who work for them. The last few years, Juneteenth has taken on a greater significance with all of the high-profile killings and other incidents involving African Americans from all ages and economic backgrounds. The Black Lives Matter protests all over the United States and the world brings to the forefront the need for racial justice, reforms in police policy, and procedures and changes in legislation that particularly affect disadvantaged people of color.
The Juneteenth Committee of Springfield, Illinois, is pleased to continue the legacy in celebration by expanding efforts to eliminate racism through providing the public with information and education. We have our various activities starting on Thursday, June 17th, and ending June 20th. There will be something for everyone to take part in. Thursday, we have the Levitt Concert on the Y Block. Friday, we have a rally in front of the Lincoln Statue. We have a reception at the Illinois State Museum, in which we are inviting you all to see our exhibit. Saturday, we have a parade that will go from Martin Luther King down to Comer Cox Park. Sunday, we have church programs, a Christian extravaganza, ending with blues in the park. We would like to see all our elected officials partake in at least one of the activities we have planned. We seek the support of our community leaders to recognize the past, reimagine the present, and realize our future. Springfield has much to be proud of and a rich heritage that we must celebrate and never forget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, ladies. I'm so proud of you guys, you guys have done a great job, and these are the people who have been running this for the last, well, I've done it for some years, but they have been behind us, pushing this and making sure that it really is rising up to a regional event. We're trying to get it to a regional event where we have people visiting Springfield, Illinois, because I truly feel, and I know they do, that Juneteenth cannot be no more special in any other city but Springfield, because of our history to aid Lincoln. So I'm very proud of you guys, they have, they have just, I mean, they got a fantastic art exhibit at the Illinois State Museum, it's planned, as one of the artists, Mickey Smith, I'm sure we've all heard of her, she won a national contest, national, through polo, real polo, ain't nobody making them on the corner, it's a real polo shirt, that sold out, and all of that money went to COVID relief during that period. So they've done a great job, and, you know, in years to come, this is going to be a major event to help us in our city. Thank you.
And isn't that also, sorry, thank you, Mayor, isn't it also 217 Black Restaurant Week?
Yes.
Okay. It's a good one.
Any other comments on that? Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is, I think, Virginia Persley? Oh, she was, okay, sorry. Is there anybody else wish to address the City Council? A motion for adjournment?
Second.
Been moving second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Is that the shortest?